Let's stand. We decide to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of our heads. Our Father, thank you for tonight. I thank you for those that are represented tonight, Lord. It's this wonderful community that we call Tipton County. We thank you for that. We thank you for Tipton County Schools, Lord, and how you've providentially brought us all together as a, as a community, Lord, and we thank you for that. Thank you for the students that just represent our community so well, our teachers that just are sacrificial in their lives to be able to teach these students, our faculty, the admin, the central office staff. Thank you for all those that are involved, Lord, that just, that have something to do with our children's lives and that, that are able to, for these students to go on and just be great men and women within the community and around the world. Thank you for that. I ask for tonight that we can just do about, be about business, wise and righteous, Lord, and, and just have our children at the forefront of our, our minds tonight as we focus on the business for the, for our district. In the name of Christ, amen. Well, we're good to see y'all tonight. Hope everybody's well. Missing Mr. Gill, but we've got, we've got enough to perform tonight, so. Take a look at your agenda tonight and no issues there, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented. Motion by Mr. James, second by Mr. Lavelle. Any discussion on that? Not? All in favor say aye. Any oppose? Motion passed. We have any additions to our agenda tonight? No additions? Okay. Well, not. Now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Byrd for best part of the night. Teacher substitute of the month presentation as well as student presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I get to do the fun stuff here first. We do have three students here tonight who have been, been given the distinction of being students of the month, and we'll start with Munford Elementary. We have Carson Farley, a fifth grader, so Carson, come on up. Carson was selected for student of the month for his cooperation and work ethic, his consideration to others, and his outstanding attitude. And Dr. Cope said Carson is a constant source of positivity and encouragement, greeting others each day with a smile that brightens the room. His thoughtful, thoughtful nature and kind heart are evident in the way he supports his classmates, celebrates their successes, and inspires others to do their best. Carson embodies the true spirit of our school by leading through kindness, encouragement, and a positive outlook. So congratulations to Carson.
Y'all tell me those aren't the coolest shoes you got on.
Jacket looks nice, too.
Jacket very nice.
All right, and then from Brighton Middle School, we have Paisley Lott, who is an eighth grader, and Mr. Willie. So Paisley, she was like an athlete, calling her name. Okay, so Paisley was selected for a, a student of the month for her cooperation and work ethic, her leadership, consideration to others, outstanding attitude, outstanding grades, and being a positive role model for other students. Paisley makes everyone's day better. Her positive attitude and sense of humor are a bright spot in the day of her teachers and peers. She is the first one to help others or befriend those who need it. In addition to being a standout student athlete, she is a positive role model and uplifting presence at Brighton Middle School, and that was from Ms. Annalise Cope, your eighth grade E.L.A. teacher. Congratulations, Paisley. And finally, from Brighton High School, we have Micah Armstrong, who is a twelfth grader. And Micah was selected as a student of the month for his cooperation and work ethic, leadership, community involvement, consideration of others, outstanding attitude and grades, and being a positive role model for other students. And this is from Ms. Aubrey Drenner, C.T.E. teacher. From the moment Micah joined my class as a sophomore, he has constantly stood out as a student who gives 100% to his academics, athletics, and every organization he serves. Over the past three years, he has grown into a strong leader who is eager to help others embrace new ideas and ensure every student feels included. His natural talents in marketing, public relations, and relationship building quickly set him apart from others. Congratulations, Micah. And then finally, we have our teacher of the month, and she is from Munford Middle School, Ms. Whitney McPherson, if you will come up. Her principal. Outstanding last year. Always has been, and we can hope, will continue to be for Tipton County Schools. Fifteen years in Tipton County Schools. Ms. McPherson does the unseen work every school needs. As a teacher, you'll get a Monday morning email wishing you a great week and help whenever you need it. On her committee submission form, Ms. McPherson put a sticky note, willing to help with anything. Ms. McPherson typifies the highly effective teacher who is approachable for other teachers, students, and all the middle school extras. Congratulations.
Thank y'all. Parents and teachers and admin, we appreciate everything y'all do and what you mean for our community. And I feel like tonight was, I mean, is this a, was this a, trying to get Notre Dame into? Is that the only reason why I had Micah? Three Notre Dame, I know how much brand it was Notre Dame. Did you get any of that, Micah?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry.
Where's Micah, Lon?
I'll give you that a hard time. But thank y'all very much. We appreciate everything, you know, that y'all do for Tipton County Schools and, and making us just, just excel in so many things. Teachers, admin, staff, and parents as well, and students. Thank y'all. Y'all, y'all can stay if you want to, or y'all can go out there and take pictures however you want to, whatever you want to do. Thank y'all for coming tonight. It is. That's. Thanks. Thank y'all. What a, that's always good, and thank you for doing that. Great students. Well, consent agenda. Do we have anything to pull out of that consent agenda tonight? He's, he's pretty easy. I don't think we'll do it off consent agenda. Okay. If not, then we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is. Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion on that? Not at the end. All in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion passed. Whoa. Mr. McCann, you want to give us a policy committee update?
Yeah, we met at five o'clock in the annex when we reviewed the second half of Section Four, but nobody really submitted anything, so nothing changed there. And then this is the second reading for policy, 5.301.
Yeah, so, all right, so let's, as far as the section, you'll see there's Section Four, we reviewed that, 4.5, like Mr. McCann said. We'll take a, a motion on that, approve that section of policy. We have a motion. Most members, Mr. Jenkins, we have a second. Second, Mr. Lavelle. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye. Any oppose? About a motion, I'll take a motion on second reading of policy revisions. This is that bereavement, we, we looked at that last week, the emergency bereavement and all, and there was just a, a minor change in that, just a few minor changes and all, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at that, so no, no issues there. Do we have a motion to approve that policy? Got a motion, members, second by Mr. Jenkins. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye. Any oppose? That motion passed. Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Yes, well, we didn't talk about it, but I guess we'll review Section Five for January, so anything in Section Five will.
The entire, entire Section Five, though?
It's the, the first half.
First half, okay. So, Board, if you'll be looking at that, kind of, you got any suggestions or whatnot? Get that Dr. Byrd, she'll bring it to our attention and we'll meet. Just so you know, while I admit that, mention of that, we're not going to do a December work session. Just a reminder. No December work session, we're off until January. Okay? Thank you, Mr. McCann. Instruction report, Dr. Byrd?
I hate that Mr. Gill's not here to hear about C.T.E.
He's, he's, he's listening. He's listening. Mr. Gill. He's online, he's listening.
What does C.T.E. stand for, Mike?
Just, just a few, just a few brief curriculum updates, mainly C.T.E. Brighton High and Covington High sent two representatives from each of those two schools to a training in November for the, with the A.O.P.A. training, and that's the aviation training. That was in Indianapolis, as they make preparations to add aviation courses for the 26, 27 school year. Brighton has chosen to do manned aviation and Covington High the unmanned, so more like the drones. And we wanted one school to do one and, and the other, so that we make sure we cover both. So we're excited about that, and that will be at Brighton High and Covington High. We are working with the University of Memphis. We've received a grant called the Rural Healthcare Pathways Expansion Grant, and we, our, our goal is to add dual enrollment opportunities in Anatomy and Physiology One and Two for our three high schools for next year, with the overall goal of making physical therapy a pathway for our students in C.T.E., and that's, as part of that grant funding. We're also in current talks with the University of Memphis and T.C.A.T. on adding Engineering as a new pathway as well, and I'll keep you posted on that. It's a work in progress, but we have begun some initial discussions with that. We actually met with U, U of M personally last week with Chairman Shankle to discuss a new partnership with them using their, we talked about Engineering, but we also talked about using their STEM Hub, which is where they have resources for STEM that we can use in our elementary, middle, and high schools, and it's free. We can check out kits from them, bring that kit to the district, and use those in our STEM classes. And so we're excited about this new partnership. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for setting that visit up last week. Also, in your online folders, you'll see a copy of the strategic plan, and that is the plan that you all put in place this past spring, and I've highlighted the areas that we have either completed or that are ongoing, just to give you a progress report. And we're excited about the, that the direction our district is moving, but those are the things that we've either, like I said, we've either done or they're ongoing, they're in progress. Any questions on any part of that strategic plan?
I wanted to go back to the C.T. on, like aviation. I know, like, some parts of it, we're struggling with teachers for stacking for those courses. Do we have teachers in place for?
So, both of the schools has, have identified, and I, and I hate to say the name out loud in case it changes, but they, they've both identified current teachers that will be teaching those classes. So, yeah, we feel really good about the direction, and those teachers were actually two of the ones who went to the, the training in Indianapolis on the curriculum. So, yeah, we feel really good about it. We're trying to work with T.C.A.T. to make it dual enrollment, but I think that may not happen for another year. So it may just be regular August of 2026, and August 2027, it may be a dual enrollment opportunity.
I've got a question. Goal three, our strength in our community partnerships. Just looking at the volunteer support opportunities there, I know we, I don't know about the, the donations from businesses or, I don't know what that would go to and how we probably need to, you know, I, I like that, but as far as the community volunteer event, well, let's just look at this. Utilize local entities for student mentoring programs. Does the Boys and Girls Club fit into that? Is that, is that what we're looking for there, Doc, or is that, what are we looking for there on that?
Well, probably yes, yes, but an, an example is I know that Coach Fields is starting a new mentoring program. Do you want to, I don't want to steal your thunder on that because I know you probably know more about it than I do, but you want to speak briefly about the new program that you're starting?
Yeah. Well, a few, a few years ago, Mr. Thomas Hayes and myself, we started a mentoring group with a group of kids from Crest Hill Elementary, and the good, one thing that we found out, I guess was our only measure and assessment or whatever, so out of 10 of those kids, now these kids were challenged kids, stayed in trouble a little bit. A couple of them had been to ALC, but at the end of the year, no, not the end of the year, at the end of their junior year, none of those kids, except for two, returned to alternative school. So we're starting it again. Well, right now it's just me. I guess Thomas get a little overly, don't want to do it anymore. But, uh, so actually, I just started yesterday, or day before yesterday was the first meeting, and I have 10 kids, and we're just hoping for a little success. And I think it will happen. Especially going into the new school, so their, their challenge is to be leaders in a new school, and they're, they'll be fifth graders.
Thanks. And I will say, in addition to that, so you asked me about the Boys and Girls Club, yes, they are doing a lot of those. And keep this in mind, the Boys and Girls Club, they, those are all our kids. Those are all our kids. The kids at the Boys and Girls Club are Tipton County Schools' kids over there. So one of the things that, like, I know Ed is doing, and their board is pushing, is a lot of mentoring, a, a number of mentoring programs there. So he's already lined up a number of men and women throughout the community to go in and go into those schools and occasionally have lunch with them, talk to them, check out how things are going. So I would encourage y'all to be a part of that, too, if you'd like to. But it's basically just kind of, you know, say, hey, man, what do you think about your new school? How's it going? What's going on? And then we'd probably branch out from there. But mainly the reason for those two schools, and they'll probably do it at, like Charger Academy, too, is because those are the local, that's where the Boys and Girls Club would be. So that's a big partnership there in addition to, you know, the other just local things that we engage with some others. Yep.
Well, I would look at that, then, is that we are, that's probably one of those you can't put a yellow behind, because you're constantly doing that, right? That's something that's never, check a box and say we're done, right? It's, let's, let's continue that as well as partnering with police agencies for security inspection measures. I feel like we do that a lot anyways. I mean, I think that's a.
Probably could highlight it those.
No, it's fine. I wasn't trying to call you out. I just, I mean, I was thinking is, that's a, that's one that's almost hard to highlight. It's like, we want to continue that, what he's doing, and others, and even additional.
Well, and you develop new partnerships as far as specifically for mentoring, and then sometimes that phases out and something else. Like, we used to have a program called Rise to Read, and some of you in the, in the Covington community may remember that it was, it's a group of folks through a church that came in and read with, with lower elementary students. And so those are things that we want to, you know, I hate to say COVID, but a lot of things changed during that time, and people weren't coming into the schools as much, but, yeah, but we, we welcome that. Of course, there's policies, you know, there's policies and procedures that have to be followed. If someone's going to come into a school, we'll, we'll adhere to those. But those are the types things that we're looking for to help, to help our students.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes, sir.
So I forgot to mention, so Mr. Mark McLean did go over with me. I'm just getting a little, I said I went by myself, but he went over with me.
Thank you. Good sidekick to have, right?
Oh, yeah.
The last thing that I have is I want to do two congratulations tonight. Ms. Christie Ross from Charger Academy, y'all know Ms. Christie. She is our Principal of the Year for Tipton County School. She was just recently. And Ms. Harry Yarbrother, who does coordinate school health, she is our Supervisor of the Year. And so we have been there. We want to congratulate them, and we're certainly blessed to have both of these ladies on, on our team. And, Mr. Chair, that's all I have unless someone has a question for them.
We have any questions, Dr. Byrd? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Field?
Mr. Chair, I am going to yield my time to Mr. McLean. We have to do a threat assessment report to you all, I think, every, every quarter, and he's going to do that for us tonight. But I do want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year in case we don't see each other again during the holidays. I also want to say, man, it's, it's great to have support from, from this group. You know, it's, it makes it, it makes it a lot easier. I get a lot of calls, and it's good to know if, if the calls come to you all, y'all got my back.
Yes, sir.
So that means a lot. Anyway, Merry Christmas. I told, I told Mr. McLean, I said, be sure and not wear jeans, man, but I didn't even tell.
Hey, I do want to thank you guys for what you do and the support. I'm very proud of our school district and what we've accomplished and are going to accomplish, and very excited about that new school building. My job tonight is to kind of give you a report. We, we have threat assessment teams in every school in our, our, our district, and when we do reports, we want to make you guys aware, so we do a report quarterly. Kind of going to review first nine weeks, and then I'll give you the second nine weeks, and it'll be to date, you know, something I have between now and Christmas, but let's hope not. So first nine weeks, we had a total, we had a total of 10 threat assessments that were conducted throughout our schools. Four of those were in high school. Middle school also did four as well. Our elementary schools had two. Five of those were deemed credible threat, five were not credible threat. So we report on all of them. Luckily, we do work Homeland Security, and then you got your five different law enforcement agencies throughout our county that we work with, and, and it, it, it's, it's, it's a good team effort, so. But the first nine weeks, we had, we had a total of 10. Second nine weeks, total of nine, and what we did there, we had three that were deemed credible threats, and we had six that were not credible threats. So 19 for the semester, for the school year, and 10 of those, we had law enforcement engaged or informed and contacted about what was going on. But so far, and like I said, through the first semester, we've done a total of 19 assessments for, for our students and campuses throughout Tipton County Schools. All right, y'all have any questions for me regarding any of this?
How does that, how does that compare to other districts our size, broadly?
I, I don't think that information, I, I don't know that late, but I can find it out for you. I would say we're on the low end of things as far as our, our county goes. And like I said, we take it very seriously, so there, there's things that, that we, we do to make sure that our schools are safe, and like I said, comparing the school districts, now I don't have that information.
Yeah, probably not be good for us to compare us between us and Shelby County. 19 seems pretty good. Only three credible, three, what'd you say, three, so eight credible overall, so.
We had a total, total of 19.
Five and three.
Yeah, we had five and three, so eight total that we deemed credible threats, either to themselves or somebody else.
Let me throw this in, too. Number one, two things. Mark's been awesome. I mean, I, I know James has been like, man, this is sure nice with Mark up here, so, I mean, Mark's been doing a fantastic job, as you can tell.
Right, sir.
I'm, I'm telling you. But the other thing is this.
Butter be up for something.
And.
No, I'm just kidding. But I do want to say this, and you may want to speak to this, both of you. When you say credible threat, you know, because I know we have people listening online and here, too, credible threat doesn't mean like we found a bomb. That's not what that means, right? Credible threat just means when they went through the threat assessment process, that basically if a kid was putting something on social media that I may do, you know, I'm on, you know, bring a knife, or, or I may beat you up and you get to school or whatever, that, that threat assessment found, okay, yeah, there's, was it means, mode, and method? So you go, James taught me that. So you, you go through that and you find out, okay, is it, is it credible? Could that actually happen? Does he have access to that? Do these kids not get along? Are they in the same school? Did he really say that? That's what the threat assessment team does. So, just like, so for credible threat, am I describing that right, Mark? So?
It could be anything, and, and I don't want to interrupt you.
No, good. Go ahead.
Verbal terms are our main thing, and like you said, we deal with social media and what goes on in the school buildings, buses, wherever it takes place, we try to address that. And then your teams meet and decide individually that child, you know, did, did they have access to anything? Is, is this a credible threat or not based on that student's history, behaviors, and, and, you know, parents contacted and go through it with them as well. But we have a team, a team, a group of, in each school that are familiar with the student. Our social workers are involved with that, of course, law enforcement, and our SROs are in our buildings. So it's a very, it's a team effort. Your counselors, your guidance counselors are there, and all your admin are active daily with, with kids and their lives and what's going on. So when we say credible threat, that doesn't mean, you know, that something huge has happened. It could just be a verbal threat from one student to another, or one student to multiple students. And then, of course, you're all aware of what happens online. We, we address those things as well. And we're, we're lucky in the fact that we have people in our county that are very good at what they do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't think Hunter's here tonight. I've come, do you want to take over the capital projects and super school report?
Yes, sir. Super school is going well. So everything is, everything's on track to open. When they, when they get back from Christmas break, kids and students, I mean, I mean, kids and, and teachers and everybody, they're going to walk in their new building. So the cool thing is, so actually, that's why Hunter is not here tonight. Hunter is moving teacher stuff tonight. So we started, so this past Monday and Tuesday afternoon from four to six, there's a window. We had Service Master pick, get boxes, the teachers loaded up boxes of stuff in their classrooms, Service Master trucked it all over there and put it in the proper room, so the teachers and employees could go in and just basically open their boxes and start putting stuff that they could, where they could, right? Except for the stuff that he's to keep teaching. So, but we moved them in Monday, Tuesday. They're doing it again tonight. That's where Hunter is. And, and it's good, because we found things like, you know, we had some teachers, they have storage rooms, like the CDC and pre-K and kindergarten have storage rooms in there. Well, they're saying, you know, they said, you know, it'd be really cool if we had shelves in here. We didn't even think about that, right? It's just a big concrete floor, open space to put Rubbermaid containers and all that kind of stuff in. Like, cool. So, I mean, that was Monday night. Lincoln started installing it Tuesday morning. So, you know, it's stuff like that. So that we're going to find out as they come in and start making their room their own room, you know? Okay, ooh, yeah, didn't think about that. Thank you. So we're moving that stuff around. So it's been good. And then, of course, they can move in again Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday of next week. And of course, we're going to be very open. We're, and of course, all during Christmas break, we'll try to have it open at different times, but I think one of the goals was to give them enough access to it prior to Christmas break that they didn't have to go in there and, and do it during Christmas break if they didn't want to, you know? But now there are some, like Tuesday night, they were hitting me up, making you open it up on Saturday. Can we do this? Can we do, they're, man, they're, they're excited. And it looks cool. I had some kids go through with me, like I told you, Wednesday, some kids came in that are going to be students there, or currently students, but they're going to be in the new building. And, man, I, I'll tell you, it's exciting seeing adults like it.
Yeah.
But there's nothing, it's nothing. Like seeing those kids walk in there and go, I mean, like, when a kid can't say anything?
Right, yeah.
That's not normal, right? So they walk in there and just like, man, I mean, this is, this is just incredible. They were just in awe. They were walking through, you know, one kid said, this is the best, I heard of people running down the hallway. He said, this is the best school in the world. Running down the hallway. I'm like, you know what? That right there, that right there. That's, that's the reason for everything that this whole team, y'all, everybody has been through. That's the reason, right there. And I'm telling you, they're, they're loving it. So still some things to tweak, but we're really excited about it. Everything's on track. The fire marshal's cleared the building. Health inspectors cleared the kitchen. We have an occupancy. I mean, everything's good to go. Like, we're just, more furniture's coming in, getting that stuff set up, tweaks here and there, doing punch lists like every day. So, you know, going well. Going well. Thank y'all for the support.
Questions? Do you have any other capital project updates, or?
The, the capital projects that we presented to y'all, Billy and his team and everyone else are working hard to encumber that money, or to go ahead, like, you know, tables should be here any day. Kitchen table, I mean, cafeteria tables, we're expecting them at any point. Because basically, when y'all said yes, man, Jamie ordered them the next morning.
She already had it in her cart.
She had it in her cart. She was ready.
To deliver those to the two schools that were redoing cafeterias, Munford and Covington? Will we hold off on?
No, we're gonna, a- as soon as there's an opening, it may be a weekend. It may be a, a break or something like that, we'll put them in. It won't be like during, we want to move them all in at one time, but it could be a weekend, could be whenever. But yeah, we're not going to hold on to them very long. We're going to try to get them in there as soon as we can. And then same with, you know, when we redo the cafeteria at Munford and the cafeteria at Covington, we're going to, that would probably be a break or, or partially done on weekends until we can get it all done. Cafeteria tables can go in as soon as we can. Yep. Yep. Everything else going, going well?
Good. Thank you.
We're going to spend your $2 million.
Any other questions? With none, Billy?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
You'll find inside your folder the monthly financial report for the 141 General Purpose School Fund, 142 School Project Fund, 143 Cafeteria Fund, and the 177 Capital Projects Fund for the revenues and expenditures for the month of November. First, second item of business, Mr. Chairman, our preschool population is, becomes such that we require the hiring of another staff, additional staff member to maintain teacher-student ratio. So we're requesting the board approve us to add an additional position to the Tipton County Preschool for the remainder of the year and going forward.
What's that typically run, or can we even say, or?
So, bottom of the pay scale, $50,000, highest out of the pay scale, you know, depending on doctor or whatever, the employee benefits. So you're talking half a year, so probably, I'm going to estimate $45,000, could be a little less, could be a little more.
The preschool, is that, that's not funded by teacher or anything like that? The preschool, is that, that's not funded by TESA or anything like that?
Well, that's funded local, state and local dollars, yes. That's, that's the preschool that is located inside Austin Elementary, not the pre-K classrooms that you find inside, the BPK classroom that you find inside each of the schools.
Any questions or anything?
Yeah, we have, I guess we're good.
Yes, my intention is probably to use the TESA outcomes funding to fund that position for the remainder of the year. And we'll be getting that funding this month.
So we're, so it's just basically a teacher-student ratio, we just, we, was it one, oh.
Yes, Dr. Bird.
Yeah, okay. So, um, in, in the Tipton County Preschool, you know, it's a special needs program, and, and we have, uh, we, we have special needs students and regular ed students. And right now, we have eight openings, that's it. We're almost maxed out. And we have an extensive list of students waiting to be tested. So, uh, when we talk about adding, the reason for the need for this position is to serve, is to serve additional special needs students. Um, and the ones who are being tested, most will qualify, and we only have eight spots. And so, it, it's a, it's a good time here at Christmas to go ahead and add that position now. If the class will fill up. So that, that's where we are. There, there's a need to serve the special needs population at Tipton County.
Motion, I got motion by Mr. Jenkins. I just take my, you may, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you for that excellent motion.
Uh, next is another new position request, and this particular position is being funded through the consolidated funding application title fund, and it's for an assistant position at Mumford Elementary School, and this is a special population as well. Obviously, it's a consolidated funding application, so requesting population as such, we need another assistance position there. And that funding is covered through consolidated funding.
Gotcha. I have a motion. Second member, Mr. McCain, do we have any discussion on that? That's pretty easy from there. No, no, all in favor to say aye?
Uh, my next request, Mr. Chairman, uh, Brian Croson, Principal of Brighton High School, uh, based on, uh, county standards for internal schools, and our district policy is requesting to apply for a credit card in the school's name. Uh, this is the procedure the board has to approve it, obviously, a credit card, which is equivalent, or it is cash equivalent. And we already have, this board, this district board has measures in place that govern the use of a credit card, but things are coming such that they, they need a credit card for their operations. And so he's asking for your permission to apply. Uh, the internal school manual says it has to be in the principal's name, that's who's responsible for internal school funds. And so that's the request tonight is to authorize Brighton High School Coach Croson, Brian Croson, to apply for a credit card.
We have a motion, I motion Mr. Jenkins, we have a second, and a second by Mr. Gray. Any questions or discussions on that? Can I ask a question?
So, uh, I just want to make sure, so the main reason for a credit card being necessary in the schools now is online purchasing.
Reservation.
Travel, reservation, things like for CTE programs, that kind of stuff, right? Okay, I, I want to say that loud, because it's not like they just need a credit card just so they can take, use a credit card. I mean, it's a lot of Amazon, a lot of the stuff online, I mean, you need to, to be able to order that way. And then reservations for CTE travel and all that kind of stuff, uh, you know, competition travel for sports teams and band and everything. It's just, it's hard to reserve anything without one.
Still pulling POs for that.
That's correct. It still follows the same procedures, everything else follows, it's still paid for by the internal, the bookkeeper internally. Uh, doesn't obligate the district immediately. Now, obviously, we have ultimate obligation, but this, this is for the internal school funds alone.
And they've been operating without one, so, okay.
My understanding, that is, is a request now. A lot of them have used their debit card, of course, with the level of fraud that's coming along. That's direct access to your checking account, so it's safer, obviously, to have a credit card as well.
No other questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, my last item of business tonight before the board. The maintenance department is requesting to purchase a vehicle, and as you all know, if we, uh, purchase a vehicle, um, and is over the threshold, it's nobody that comes off state contractor, it has to be bid out of existence except for twenty-five thousand dollars. In this particular case, and it's my understanding this is a bucket truck, to change out lights and that kind of thing. This is a used truck, and so the, uh, county standards say that when it's a used vehicle and it's under the bidding threshold, has to have board approval. And we have to have a document that shows that it's within five percent of market value. And for this particular transaction, we're using Commercial Truck Trader as the, uh, market value. Oftentimes, it's blue book, but because it's a bucket truck, we had to go to Commercial Truck Trader. And so, uh, the estimate for this vehicle is right around the thirteen, fourteen thousand dollar mark to purchase this used truck, and so that requires your approval to do that. The funds are already budgeted and under maintenance equipment, it was where we anticipate to take that money from, uh, but we need your approval for that.
Motion, Mr. Jenkins, do we have a second on that, before we take it up for discussion?
I'll say.
Second, Mr. McCain, questions, discussions, now the motion's on the floor. I, is that, does that take special training or anything? What's that? I mean, you know, with the idea?
That's actually a great question, because it doesn't have air brakes. So the good news is, all of our maintenance guys can drive it. That was one of the things. We were looking for one that didn't have to have some kind of special certification, CDL type stuff to be able to drive it. And this has no commercial air brakes on it, so you don't, we're good. Any of them could drive it. Now, other than that, uh, there's really no special training necessary to be able to use it.
It'd be who to get some training, some training on a bucket. Yeah, somebody could.
I would agree.
And we can do it, and actually, I mean, it doesn't, it's not required, but we can definitely do it. And, I mean, honestly, insurance might appreciate that.
Anybody, I'd say you could call Southwest, or see if they got one, they, because I don't know, when I was there, the guy had to get trained to, for the bucket.
Okay.
That part of it, so, that part.
But if y'all approve that purchase tonight, then I can talk to, I can talk to Hunter in the morning, and we can line up whatever's necessary to get some training done.
I think, I think that would probably, I mean.
Do you know who it's coming from?
This particular estimate I have is from Delafont Motors.
I was gonna say, if it was a, a lift company, they could probably do your training on site for you, lift training.
Maybe internally, it's just whoever runs it needs to be trained before they get up there, you know, I hear y'all do internal policies and stuff like that.
And we've done that with like the skid steers, the mini X, and all that stuff.
Kind of apply to with that bucket truck.
Right, exactly.
Is this to replace something, like would we farm that out, what we'd had need before, or?
Yes, we, we didn't have one, but it's to utilize, kind of like the stuff we're doing with the mini X and all that, that y'all helped us purchase a while back. Yeah, there's, we don't have to, we don't have to try to find that somewhere else.
That pay for itself eventually?
Oh, yeah. The, the, you know, the other equipment we have certainly has done that.
You probably need to check with insurance too, to make sure they cover that.
Okay.
Just, I don't know, I mean, that.
No, I think.
When you're elevated, when you're elevated work like that, it's, you know.
Yeah, we'll check on it.
Something to think about.
And what we'll do is, i- if y'all, if y'all do approve it, you can approve it with, knowing that I'm gonna check on that first thing, and I'll make sure, unless there's anything to want to, because if I find out insurance has a problem with it, or the training thing, or whatever, then we just won't purchase it until we get that done.
Do we need to, I mean, is that, does that need to be purchased by the end of the year or anything? Is there a need to purchase it right now? I mean, as far as fast, or?
Well, to pursue it, we had to have board approval. And so obviously, we will assess the situation, see if the truck's still available, is this the truck we need? When he, Dr. Combs identifies, uh, the questions you all proposed tonight, uh, then we'll take that into consideration and then move forward. Then if there's, if, that's not the deal, when you come back for another vehicle, we'll certainly do that.
We'll make the motion to where, maybe pass it to Tito upon, what Dr. Combs finds out based on that. Yeah, that's, if it falls through, then.
So you gotta have the motion to approve, what's our, what are we approving? Are we approving?
We have the authority to purchase a vehicle, a, a used vehicle for maintenance equipment under the bidding threshold based on the market value for an independent, that's within five percent of an independent, uh, auto retailer or estimator.
If it got held off till next month, is that, how's that hurt?
Mr. Bennett or Dr. Combs would have to speak to that. I think there's an imminent need that has to be done in the next week or two.
No, it's, I mean, th- there's not. I mean, you know, could the guys start using it pretty quickly? Yes, to do some stuff. But nothing like, you know, mind altering. I mean, we could wait for a minute, and, and the only difference would be if the truck's still available. Because it is, it's a used vehicle, so the last one may not happen in a month.
Well, as long as insurance, I mean, it's not an issue with insurance, it's a thing.
I don't think so, I was just, no, we could.
No, because tho- but tho- those are good, I'm, I'm asking that actually right now.
Well, motion's on the floor, so, uh, any other questions or discussions?
What were we doing previous, like borrowing?
We would borrow it or get, or, or, like, get the service to, we would pay someone else to come do it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think that'd pay off.
From a speedy, you know, side of things too, you know? Any other discussion or questions? Well, if not, then, uh, motion's on the floor for, for them to purchase that, and I would assume is with, under that, y'all knew research, and if something, if something comes up strange, something like, yeah, we just won't.
If something's weird, we won't purchase it, yeah.
All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Let's hear if there are any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief, thank you, appreciate it. All right, well, we get to the best line item, thirteen other business. Uh, Dr. Combs, do you have anything to add, other than?
Um, so, uh, I do have, uh, I wanted to give everybody an update, so attorney interviews. So, uh, so the chairman and myself have, um, gotten it narrowed down, like I told you, to three attorneys, right? And so I think our plan is, on Jan- we've reached out to all of them, and on January twenty-seventh, we will have them here for y'all to interview. The plan is, actually, one of them will be in person and two will be virtual, but, I mean, that's fine. So, uh, there'll be, I think we've allotted about thirty minutes per, and we don't think it'll take that long, but we're just trying to be safe there. For y'all to ask them questions, whatever you want to do. All three of these came, uh, recommended, highly recommended from TSBA. That's one of the ways that we narrowed it down, Ben Torres gave us, you know, some good information there. There are a lot of folks out there, but it was, I mean, we interviewed, we talked to these people, and they were all very impressive. They were all very impressive. They all have experience with other school systems and a number of things. And you, you may or may not have heard some of them present at different things. So, anyway, um, we're gonna have those to you on January twenty-seventh. I will send their, their bios to you through email, so y'all can see that information, so you'll have all that ahead of time. But I'll, I'll probably do that January, once we get all those cut, while I'm still, I think I'm still waiting on one of them. And then we'll go from there. A couple other housekeeping things, I mean, any questions about that? I'm sorry.
Twenty-six.
Do what? You go?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-seventh, yes, sir.
We're looking to hire them by when, like as soon as we can and all that.
Y'all, if you decide at night, you can hire them.
That's right.
Because we're not, we're not under contract with.
We're still with our current attorney. We, we still use our current attorney.
Right, but we're not under a binding contract with them.
To my knowledge, no. I mean, what, one of the things is, when we talk to a couple of them, that's like, almost like an attorney to an attorney. So when they kind of, they will work that out amongst themselves, in that end, so, um, yeah.
So what I, I will say is, what you'll see on a lot of these is, especially, well, actually, all three of them, is that they, they all have, they're bigger firms, okay? And so they all have individual, um, sectors that they represent. So, if we had another insurance thing, we would be able, one, either one of them, we'd be able to say, hey, their insurance attorney would be able to pick right up and help us right there or something. They're, 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 how, what's the word?
Well-versed.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's just, each one is, yeah, well-versed in, in different, uh, areas of, of their, you know, the law firm, so. All three of them are like that, so you're, you're, that's why they kind of roast at the top, right, is, is, and so, uh.
But their main specialty is pretty much school law?
They have, they, well, they have, they have a, yes, the, the attorneys, those that we have spoken to, they are specific in school law, right? So you'll have, it's several you already know that you've seen and presented, so, you know what I'm saying? So they, they, they absolutely are, um, very geared to school law. And, and I, I, one of the things that I think's more of is tasked with Dr. Combs and Dr. Bird is, is what we look at is, is how well do they like them? Right? Well, I mean, and I'd be, I mean, they're the ones that's gonna want to use them the majority of the time, right? If we're using them, we probably got a problem. You know, they gotta read contracts, and Dr. Bird probably talks to Deborah daily, right, you know? Stuff with lawsuits and, and contracts and, and just, you know, teacher firings and stuff like that, so. I think really, I think we, I really want to hear their, um, recommendations too. And I think that'll hold pretty weighty on, on what we decide, but. So ultimately, y'all's decision, and so hopefully, I think we'll have three good candidates to be able to bring you, that you'll, that you'll feel good.
I mean, there's a lot, even like the trauma-informed stuff that James and Mark were talking about. I mean, we engage attorneys on that stuff, right? Even, um, when there's like legislation that may be coming out, there's, our attorneys will do like preemptive work to say, look, if this passes, here's what you're looking at, you know, I mean, stuff like that. So, it's, it's really good to have them, yeah, and Ben, you know, we've been leaning on Ben here lately for some stuff, but, I mean, it's, it's good to have them, and it's good to know they have a lot of stuff in house, for sure. So, anyway, yeah, that's the plan there. And then, um, a couple things, uh, Ms. Cheryl, AKA Ms. Claus, has hooked you up with a sweet notebook right there. She wanted to make sure that y'all had those, and, um, you know good and well that she's the one that did that boat, because it's been on my bucket a little bit. And then, uh, also, uh, your stockings are home by the new Sonic panel repair. And, uh, yeah, and so make sure that when you leave, they are in district order and they also have your initials on them, so. And, uh, make sure you empty that bad boy out before you leave, because that is yours, okay?
Mad, all your chocolate.
That's right, that's right. Uh, and, um, I, I think that's all I have.
Does anybody else have anything tonight to add? No? Board, I've got something to add tonight. Um, I've got a letter tonight I want to read to you. Received this Monday evening, and, uh, I'll read it to y'all. This is made up to me, but obviously all of y'all. Karen Schankel. With the utmost respect, did I present this letter as acknowledgement of my intent to retire as the superintendent of the Tipton County Schools effective June twenty-twenty-six? The last thirty-three years in service to the students of this system have been an esteemed honor, and I've appreciated the board's oversight during my eight years in this most current role. I'm exuberant about what the future holds for the children in our district. This amazing place is truly an engine for hashtag endless possibilities, respectfully, Dr. John's coming. So, um, probably comes as surprise to a lot of us, right? I've thought about it all week, and, uh, I'm very thankful for my friendship with Dr. Combs and what we, he has accomplished here at TCS, and, um, I know yours as well, so, uh, first of all, any comments, questions for him?
That presentation's in our hands, right?
Dr. Combs, do you have anything to add?
I mean, you know, um, I've, I've talked for a while, man, I, I came straight out of Freed Hardin, straight into the county school system. I've been here, and it's been phenomenal. I mean, everything's been great. And I'm telling you, y'all been just incredible to work with. I mean, going through the stuff that we went through, from the, from everything, I mean, goodness gracious. From COVID, to masking, to CRG, to flooding, to tornadoes, to rebuilding the school, to, you know, scrapping with insurance, to, I mean, y'all have just been incredible. And, uh, so I just want to say thank you. You know, I mean, I, I've told people before, you know, my goal is to get these kids in this building, and then I just couldn't, I couldn't predict beyond that, but, uh, you just kind of get that feeling, you, you know when it's time. And it's, uh, you know, my, my, my patience keeps getting like that. I used to be, I used to be known for my patience, and here lately, uh,
That's the age.
It's just, is that what that is? Well, I, I, I can feel it. Um, I've got a, a grandson that's gonna need my attention, and, um, and you know, I'm, I'm, I live here, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna always be a part of this system. I, I love it too much just to drop out, so. But yeah, it's just, it's just time, and, uh, I, I appreciate you letting me say that. Thank you.
We appreciate you, Don.
I think we have been very blessed to have you. Have you leading us, and, you know, you're a Christian man, and I think that speaks volumes. Our teachers, our students, they think you're the quirkiest person alive.
They're great. That's right, thank you.
I mean, your job well done.
Yep, thank you, yep.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you one thing, you and I have been through a lot over the past few years, um, ups and downs, but thank God, we came together this way. Like I said, are you a friend, a mentor? And I appreciate you, everything you've done, the way your staff runs, it's all because of how you lead by example. And, um, I appreciate that.
Thank you every day.
Thank you, man. That means a lot. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Richard, I'm in crime. Thirty-three years, it doesn't pay, that's.
I, I appreciate it. And hey, look, I'm not dying.
He's got till June.
That's right, that's right. I, I will say, I was telling Blake earlier, I was counting it up, and I was writing that letter at eleven o'clock Monday night, sending it to him, because I hadn't written it yet, um, I've worked with. I've worked with twenty-seven board members during, as a superintendent, not as assistant superintendent, uh, so, yeah, so, uh, a- anyway.
I'm just glad you did it electric form.
I am never gonna. That was electric, that was all electric right there.
So, yeah, uh, so, I, I say with that, I, I mean, there's gonna be plenty of time, you know, we got till June, it's not gonna wait anytime soon, so, what does that mean for, uh, what does that mean for us? And I, and, and so, immediately, I reached out to TSBA, and so, uh, the process begins, all right, starts with the new superintendent. Uh, so, uh, there's not much to say tonight, but we will look to January to start making decisions, right? There, there's gonna have to be just things that have gotta go in certain orders and stuff, and so, that's, the, 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 the hiring of the superintendent is solely on board, solely on board. So, we'll start, uh, looking at January to do that, but in, in the interim for the next month, is take a look at, I think it's five point eight oh one and five point eight oh two, that's the, that's the qualifications, that's the hiring, uh, you know, process and stuff like that, and, and, um, you know, we're gonna, I would, I would anticipate looking to TSBA to help us through this process, that makes the most sense and stuff. And so, that's what I'm gonna look toward in January, be thinking about that, when we get, when we come to meeting in January, is that's gonna set that path on for the next few months, as to how we get to that, that end, end goal of finding the next superintendent, right? Transition smoothly and get to that point, does that make sense? So that, I think that's what we look for in January, is to, to get that January meeting, is, uh, I will have TSBA here, either Ben or one of the members here, just to help us through that, if you have questions and stuff, so we'll have them here for that. Um, um, I know one of the things they're going to look at is a salary, as far as salary of the superintendent, that'd be one of the things, as far as qualifications, we set the qualifications, right? We'll set those, and what that looks like, carriage qualifications, uh, whatever qualification we have in the policy is additional, those need to be set as well. But then also, we'll have to set the salary, so be thinking about that, not what salary you wanna get paid, but what salary the superintendent deserves to get paid, right? Just some things that, that are gonna have to be discussed within the, the, the next few board meetings, and so I anticipate board meeting, work session, board meeting, work session, to be, every one of those steps is gonna be a portion of this hiring process, okay, and then hopefully, we'll get to that point where we identify that person.
So, TSBA would help line up qualified candidates?
That, that is their, their, correct, their, their, TSBA has that function for where they do the superintendent search, you try sending in your emails and such, you know, of how you, TSBA is searching for new, you know, so they, 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 they have that function to be able to help with that, that search, which I would recommend, because that takes a lot off our place daily, you know, uh, from our daily work, which all you guys do, not this, this job, so, uh, but they will take it from, they'll take the football and they'll present us with, uh, uh, they'll bring us to the goal line.
Okay.
And then we just punch it in, so, there you go, and with our help, but they'll do a lot of the, the, the other help as well, and, and, and helping find those setting, you know, just making sure, they'll even put a calendar schedule together. These are the dates you need to hit for that, does that make sense? Feel free to reach out to TSBA as well if you want to, but look at your policies, if you don't mind, be familiar with those, and let's come back in January, ready to start that process. Hate to, hate to move that quickly, Doc, you know, you know, it's just, we forgot about you, but we've got a, as a board, we'll, we'll need to get that, I think it's vitally important that we get that and start that process in January.
He's forced her hand, he don't have a choice.
Yeah, no, at this point, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, Dr. Combs, from the first thing I mentioned, you've been a stand-up kinda guy, and I appreciate you, and it's my pleasure to be able to work with you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything nice to say or bad to say?
Now's the time. Place that you've got six months to grow. So do y'all get to, I wanna say, so do y'all get to just waive my evaluation, or do you have to still?
Oh, no, we're gonna still evaluate.
I got it, I, I got it, I, I do wanna say that, um, I appreciate, you know, Blake grabbing a hold of that, and y'all being willing to move forward with that, because, you know, the whole thing is to keep everything running smoothly, right, and I, I, I feel real good about the things that we're doing, that we have done, that we are doing, that we will continue to do, uh, in the, in the system. And I think that smooth transition, that's nice, so the, you know, when you do find that out, it makes it a lot easier for me to interact with that person, and make sure that handoff is, is, you know, that, that person has everything that they need, so, uh, you know, I, I appreciate that.
It's a big district, it's gonna take, it's gonna take someone who knows the district and, and knows the central office well, and knows how to, I mean, it's, it's gonna, it's, it's, it's gonna take some handoff, you know, can't just have it overnight.
Agreed.
It's big, it's, it's.
I agree.
So, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, I think, we're gonna take that, help you out, help this district out, to make sure that, that's gonna be our jobs, to set the, set the path straight where we can get to that point where we can hire that superintendent, but hopefully, we do, hopefully, it's, you know, pretty easy.
Yeah, I agree.
I trust this board, and this board.
I think number one qualification is, the next one has to be somebody that loves the kids as much as you do.
Absolutely.
Number one priority.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else tonight, Moore, could hit you with a lot?
Yeah, thanks.
I didn't have a choice.
I put stuff in your.
I particularly care.
One, hey, there was one thing in particular, you're really gonna like, I mean, I, I gave everybody Tylenol on there, so, I'm just saying. I did find you all.
I'm out.
Anything else, Moore?
Merry Christmas.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Very thankful for you guys, your families, and I hope y'all have a wonderful holiday. We have a motion to adjourn, that's by Mr. Edwards, taking back Mr. Liddell, all favor say aye?